National Council Regular Session, March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, by teleconference. Time is six fourteen. In vocation, Representative James Jennings, will you do that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I raise the Senate applause to give some to your prayer this evening, praying and asking for your guidance and direction. Be with us as we conduct the business of the nation. Father, bless you, be with all of us people in our nation, wherever that may be. Father, we ask these names in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you, Reverend Jennings. Roll call, National Council Secretary Christie Jackson.
Mary Crawford. Joyce Deere. Joyce Deere. Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Robert Hough.
Present.
James Jennings.
Here.
Adam Jones. Adam Jones.
Here.
William Low.
Here.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Present.
Darryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Travis Scott.
Here.
Lucian Tiger.
Present.
Speaker Randall Hicks.
Present.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent, Constitutes Forum, all business conducted, will be official. Approval of minutes. Planning session, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, pre-agenda, regular session, February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty.
Speaker, this is my motion. I make a motion that we approve the minutes with any changes.
Mark Randolph, second.
I'm gonna have to have these minutes postponed until next month because they're not complete. If someone can make that motion.
May I speak or James Jennings, I'll make a motion to postpone the minutes till next month's meeting.
Charles McHenry, second. Representative Jennings made a motion to postpone minutes until April session, seconded by Representative McHenry. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, those minutes have been postponed to April session. Next item is order of business.
May I speak or?
Yes, sir. Representative Jennings, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to move TR twenty oh four four, oh four five, oh four seven, oh four seven, and oh four eight to the top of the agenda.
Joyce Deere, second.
Okay, Representative Jennings made a motion to move TR twenty oh four four, TR twenty oh four five, TR twenty oh four six, TR twenty oh four seven, TR twenty oh four eight to the top of the agenda, seconded by Representative Deere. Any discussion?
May I speak or?
Yes, sir.
This is by request from the Department of the House. With all that going on, they feel like they need to postpone a few of them, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Jennings, any other discussion? Hearing none, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Okay. Back to order of business. Mr. Jennings. Mr. Jennings.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a motion to postpone the twenty forty-four through forty-eight?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone TR twenty forty-four to TR twenty forty-eight, to April's meeting.
Okay, Representative Jennings made a motion to postpone TR twenty oh four four, TR twenty oh four five, TR twenty oh four six, TR twenty oh four seven, TR twenty oh four eight until April session, do I have a second?
Joyce Deere, second.
Seconded by Representative Deere, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. TR twenty oh four zero. A tribal resolution of Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a request for use of school property with Bay's Public Schools, sponsor Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh four zero.
Thomas Senior Osborne, second.
Representative Yehola Osborne made a second, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh four one. A tribal resolution of Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute and submit their request for license to the State of Oklahoma Department of Human Services for the nation's childcare centers, sponsor Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh four one.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne, second.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne, discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty dash oh four two. A tribal resolution of Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute letters of agreement with Oklahoma State University Institute of Technology, OSU-IT, on behalf of the Muscogee Creek Nation Reintegration Program, sponsor Mary Crawford.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh four two. Charles McHenry, second. Seconded by Representative McHenry, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh four three. A tribal resolution of Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a room block and banquet agreement with Osage Casino Hotel for the Muscogee Creek Nation Department of Education Teacher Fellowship Project Meetings, sponsor Anna Marshall.
Speaker, a motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh four three, do I have a second?
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne, second.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne, any discussion?
Speaker Travis Scott.
Go ahead, Representative Scott.
I just have a question for Chief Hill. Chief, are we gonna go ahead and just approve these in case in the future that these events are going to be able to happen?
Yes, I was just getting ready to announce that, and if not, if it's rescheduled, whatever, to next year or canceled, you know, the money will be, the funding will be returned.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh four nine. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with Muscogee County, Oklahoma for the replacement of an existing bridge and bridge approaches, sponsor Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Hicks made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh four nine, second?
Travis Scott, second.
Seconded by Representative Travis Scott, any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five zero. A tribal resolution of Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Fuske County, Oklahoma for the replacement of an existing bridge and bridge approaches, sponsors Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Yehola Osborne made a motion to adopt twenty oh five zero, do I have a second?
This is Anna Marshall, I second.
Seconded by Representative Marshall, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five one. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with Omohee County, Oklahoma for improvements to Concharty Road and Twin Hills Road, sponsors Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Hicks made a motion. Representative Hicks made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh five one, seconded by Representative Jennings, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five two. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with Omohee County, Oklahoma for Hectorville Road Project, sponsors Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Hicks made a motion to adopt twenty, or TR twenty oh five two, second? McHenry, second. Seconded by Representative McHenry, any discussion? Any discussion?
May I speak or, James Jennings?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jennings.
I just have a question on the name of this project and I'm just asking the project if I could postpone it until next month. If I can provide some information as far as how many, uh, six citizens live down in Rose, certain, them on the ground, that would benefit the people of the Creek Nation.
Uh, upon Representative Jennings' advice, speaker, I make a motion to postpone until, uh, next month's meeting.
Representative. Representative Hicks made a motion to postpone for for April session, seconded by Representative Randolph, any more discussion?
Speaker Travis Scott.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott, go ahead.
Uh, I have a question, our chief may be able to answer, how long has this project been out of books?
Chief, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I didn't bring my book with me that had all the dates when it originally was assigned, but I'll get that answer tomorrow. And also.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Jennings?
Yes, sir, Chief.
This is the road going west, if I'm not mistaken.
That's true.
Okay, yeah, you asked that question, uh, the other day, and I'm actually, I'll get that answer tomorrow. I'll get that answer to you tomorrow.
Is any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is postponed. TR twenty oh five three. A tribal resolution of Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a purchase and sell agreement for conservation credits related to the Little Coito Road Project, sponsors Darryl Proctor.
Darryl Proctor, motion to adopt.
Representative Proctor made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh five three, do I have a second?
Speaker, Representative Hicks, second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five four. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation approving the addition of new routes as identified in Attachment A, MCN, NTTFI, twenty-twenty, to the nation's existing National Tribal Transportation Program Facility Inventory, and requesting the Bureau of Indian Affairs to add new routes to the nation's National Tribal Transportation Facility Inventory, sponsors Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randolph made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh five four, do I have a second?
Go ahead, thank you.
Seconded by Representative Hicks, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five five. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation approving the update of the Muscogee Creek Nation Long Range Transportation Plan with the addition of the routes listed in the Long Range Transportation Plan to the nation's Tribal Transportation Facility Inventory, sponsors Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randolph made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh zero, oh five five, sorry, do I have a second? McHenry, second. Seconded by Representative McHenry, any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five six. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with the city of Dewar for improvements to Dewar School Road, Dewar FB Road, South Broad Dewar Road, North Broad Dewar Road, and North Luella Road, sponsors Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Hicks made a motion to.
Randolph, second.
Representative Hicks made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh five six, seconded by Representative Randolph, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. Hearing none, that motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five seven. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with the town of Bowley, Oklahoma for improvements to Bowley Main Street, Bowley HS Street, and East Grant Street, sponsor Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Yehola Osborne made a motion to adopt TR twenty oh five seven, do I have a second?
Anna Marshall, second.
Seconded by Representative Marshall, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion is adopted. TR twenty oh five eight. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation approving a revised payments and rents policy for the Muscogee Creek Nation Department of Housing, sponsors Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Representative Yehola made a motion to postpone TR twenty oh five eight.
So get the editor's notice.
Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Hicks, any discussion?
Speaker, this is Thomas Senior.
Yes, Representative Yehola, of course.
Um, I've not been able to hear this morning, I just wanted to make everyone aware that I was gonna be postponing, uh, this piece of legislation indefinitely for three reasons. Um, the first one being, just kinda wanna reiterate that the, uh, proposed goal was to increase, uh, the monthly adjusted income percentage, five percent beginning, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, up until you get thirty percent, which would be three years. Um, and then the same thing is also the, um, the ceiling rent would increase for our rental properties as well as our homeownership program by fifty dollars for each veteran size. Um, I actually addressed this at our LSCB, um, on March the tenth, and asked at that time to postpone indefinitely, but it failed and came down to the floor. So, um, in light of what is transpiring now with this virus that's kind of, essentially, some of our citizens losing their, their jobs, I just feel like this is the reason why I need to go ahead and postpone this. And, and the next reason, Andrew, is that I feel like this is a, a major deal with increasing people's rent, um, and I think that we should wait until, um, uh, Chief Hill selects a secretary of housing, and that way they can, they can have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Yehola Osborne, any other discussion?
Speaker Travis Scott.
Yes, sir, Representative Scott.
Uh, I'm not opposed to the, the motion that has been presented, but, uh, I have a question for Ms. Osborne, when was the last time that we had had an increase?
If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Nichols, she actually answered that question during the committee meeting, and I think she said two thousand and six.
So it's been about fourteen years since we actually had an increase, and, and I understand at the time we are, uh, in, in, in the nation, in the world today, but I think in the future we might have to look at, uh, solidifying some kind of increase, like you said, when Chief Hill gets his cabinet in place, because I think it's essential to, uh, the amount of funds that we go through and some of the products, uh, some of those homes that get rehabbed and, and, and different initiatives to have that, uh, program, maybe try to get some, uh, income to help solidify those situations, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Scott, uh, Ms. Nichols, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to, uh, comment or add anything?
I, in my agreement, I'm in agreement of postponing this, um, legislation for future, to look at in the future.
Okay, thank you, is there any other discussion?
May I speak or, James Jennings?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jennings.
I, I, I just have a question for the chief to make sure he's all right with this legislation, it came out of his office.
Yes, Representative Jennings, uh, I'm fine with that postponement, I think there's two more as well, uh, it'll be further, uh, looked into.
Okay, I'll just make sure you're aware, you're agreed, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings, any other discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion has been postponed indefinitely. TR twenty oh five nine. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation approving a revised conflict of interest policy for the Muscogee Creek Nation Department of Housing, sponsors Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to postpone indefinitely.
Representative Yehola made a motion to postpone TR twenty oh five nine, postpone indefinitely.
Anna Marshall, second.
Seconded by Representative Anna Marshall, any discussion?
Speaker, Thomas Senior.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Representative Yehola.
Yes, um, again, this piece of legislation, um, I would like to postpone until, uh, Chief can get this cabinet in place, please.
Postpone or postpone indefinitely?
Postpone indefinitely.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion has been postponed indefinitely. T R twenty zero six zero. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation approving a revised grievance policy for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing. Sponsors Thomas Senior Holla Osborne.
Speaker, I motion to postpone indefinitely.
Representative Yehola made a motion. To postpone indefinitely, T R twenty zero six zero. Do I have a second?
Deloitte Ann Marshall second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion has been postponed indefinitely. T R two zero dash zero six one. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to apply for federal funding to complete. An environmental assessment, hydraulic study, and design replacement. Bridges for Bridges number zero zero one two two in Tulsa County. Bridge two eight six three seven in Hughes County. Bridge one one two five two in McIntosh County. Bridge zero two three five three in Muskogee County. Bridge zero nine seven one four in Okmoga County. And Bridge zero eight nine eight five in Creek County, Oklahoma. Sponsors Charles McHenry.
Charles McHenry make a motion to adopt.
Representative McHenry made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six one. Do I have a second?
Deloitte second.
Aye.
Seconded by Representative Hicks. Any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty dash zero six two. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation approving the renovation of the Muskogee Creek Nation Visitor Center. Utilizing federal funding from the Tribal Transportation Program. Sponsor Charles McHenry.
Charles McHenry make a motion to adopt.
Representative McHenry-
McHenry second.
Rep- rep- Sorry. Representative McHenry made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six two. Seconded by Representative Randolph. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero six three. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a. Programmatic agreement among U S Army Corps Engineers Tulsa District and Tulsa County. Tulsa County Drainage District number twelve. The Oklahoma State Historic Preservation Officer. The Oklahoma Archaeological Survey and the Osage Nation regarding compliance with section one oh six. Of the National Historic Preservation Act for the Tulsa and West Tulsa levees feasibility study in Tulsa County. Oklahoma. Sponsors Charles McHenry.
Uh, Charles McHenry make a motion to adopt.
Representative McHenry made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six three. Do I have a second?
Randolph second. No.
Seconded by Representative Randolph. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero six four. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing principal chief to execute a memorandum of agreement. With the city of Holdenville, Oklahoma for reconstruction of two city streets leading to Holdenvilleville School. Sponsor Thomas Senior Holla Osborne.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Yehola Osborne made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six four. Do I have a second?
McHenry second.
Seconded by Representative McHenry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero six five. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with Okfuske County, Oklahoma. For improvements to Mason High School Road Route. One three two east and I X L Road Route one three one nine. Sponsors Thomas Senior Holla Osborne.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Yehola Osborne made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six five. Do I have a second?
Deloitte Scott second.
Seconded by Representative Travis Scott. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero six six. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a memorandum of agreement. With McIntosh County, Oklahoma for improvements. To our Tussey Road Route eighteen twenty. Sponsors Darryl Proctor.
Darryl Proctor let me shut up.
Representative Proctor made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six six. Do I have a second?
James Jennings second.
Seconded by Representative Jennings. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, all opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero six seven. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the construction of a wellness fitness center for the Muskogee Creek Nation Reintegration Program. Sponsors James Jennings, co-sponsor Joe Hicks, Anna Marshall.
Mr. Speaker, motion to adopt James Jennings.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero six seven. Do I have a second?
Deloitte second.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero seven zero. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation. Nomination Jeremy T Pittman to serve as a district trial court judge of the district trial court civil division of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsors Patrick Freeman Jr.
Speaker this is Pat Freeman. Make a motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero seven zero. Do I have a second?
Robert Huff second.
Seconded by Representative Huff. This vote will require two thirds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Justin Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
No.
Adam Jones?
No.
William Lowe?
Yes.
Anna Marshall? Anna Marshall?
No.
Charles McHenry?
Here.
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
No.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
No.
Mary Crawford?
No.
Joyce Steer?
No.
Speaker you have eight in favor, seven against.
Eight in favor, seven against. That motion fails. T R twenty zero seven one. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation approving the adoption of a gaming policy. Restricting gaming to twenty one and over. Sponsors Patrick Freeman Jr., co-sponsor Robert Huff.
Speaker I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman Jr. made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero seven one. Do I have a second?
Darryl Proctor second.
Seconded by Representative Huff. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty zero seven two. A tribal resolution of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the construction of a new human resource cultural arts building for the College of the Muskogee Nation. Sponsors James Jennings.
Mr. Speaker, make a motion to adopt James Jennings.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt T R twenty zero seven two.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jones. Any discussion?
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jennings, go ahead.
So in this legislation, it has the title wrong. Uh. Instead of a new human resource and cultural, it should be. A new natural resource. And cultural building.
Throughout the legislation?
Yes, sir.
Discriminators error? Mr. Jennings, we'll just do that, the discriminators error and we'll we'll uh. Correct it.
That's fine.
Okay. So the Representative Jennings made the motion to adopt T R twenty zero seven two. Did I have a second? Oh, Adam Jones was the second. Okay, we were in discussion. Other than that, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. N C A twenty zero one zero. A law of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of funds received from the Department of Health and Human Services. Administration for Community Living for the Muskogee Creek Nation Caregiver Program. Sponsors James Jennings.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings Mason made a motion to adopt N C A twenty zero one zero. Do I have a second?
Second, Willow.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Lowe?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Justin Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Speaker fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. N C A twenty zero one one. A law of Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Elderly Nutrition Program. Fiscal year twenty twenty budget. Sponsors James Jennings.
Mr. Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt N C A twenty zero one one.
Ann Marshall second.
Seconded by Miss, by Representative Marshall. Any discussion?
Mr. Speaker, James Jennings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jennings, go ahead.
For those that, so that for those that weren't in the commission meeting. Uh, federal government uh. Reduced the payment for our nutrition program and then the cost of the food has gone up is the reason behind the increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Any other discussion?
Speaker Travis Scott.
Go ahead Travis Scott.
With the uh, will their budget deplete by the time of this fiscal year? Since we have uh. Shut down the centers and the number of services, the number of uh meals that is going to be implemented at this time. Does this still need to be addressed for the sponsoring?
Yes, sir. Uh, we still have uh. No meals been prepared to stay.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Chief Hill, do you want to?
Yes, um. Glad you brought that up Representative Scott. Um. As of today, we don't know how much longer this is going to be. Could be another one, two months. No one has any idea. We did have seen an increase of takeouts and homebound since. We've done the uh to-go boxes. So we couldn't tell you how much. Uh, we may have to come back for more. We don't know. If it is increased, you know, the money will be returned back to the controller's office. But I'll I'll leave that. Uh, stretching up to the council if there are any increase or whatever negotiation.
Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Lowe?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Justin Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Speaker fifteen in favor, zero against?
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. N C A twenty zero one two. A law of Muskogee Creek Nation amending M C N C A Title Five, Chapter Two, Subchapter Three entitled. Passenger van assistance grant and authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the pass- A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title Five, Chapter Two, Subchapter Three entitled Passenger Van Assistance Grant and authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the Passenger Van Assistance Grant Program. Sponsor Thomas Senior Holla Osborne.
Speaker makes a motion to adopt the substitute?
Representative Holla Osborne made a motion.
McHenry second.
Representative Holla. Representative Holla.
Yes, Speaker?
There is no, uh, substitute for this one.
Thank you.
So Representative Holla, Representative Holla Osborne made a motion to adopt NCA twenty zero one two. Seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Any discussion?
Speaker, Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Holla Osborne.
For those who did not attend the LNC meeting on March the tenth, um, I just want to go over the changes very quickly. Um, we're increasing the amount by thirty thousand dollars, not only to, um, just the cost of the vans themselves, but also I asked Shane to, to get the cost on, to add a, uh, a rail on the side of the van, uh, for people like me who are short or just elderly people, helping them get in, uh, to the vans easier. Um, and then another addition that I've made also is only churches that have not received a passenger van from the nation are eligible for the assistance. Uh, what we've seen a couple of times is that we have some churches requesting a second van when we had some churches not receive their first van. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Ms. Osborne, Holla, Holla Osborne. With this incre, with the, with the increase that you requested, that's going to allow ten vans, correct, instead of just the nine?
Correct.
Okay.
Ten vans.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, Randolph. Go ahead.
Um, I was looking for my notes here and it's, it's the planning session, um, idea though, as for the substitute to put on the agenda. I thought there was a substitute.
During LNC, there was, not necessarily.
In, in the committee, there was a substitute.
Uh, but this is the bill, the substitute bill.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I can see. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Speaker Travis Scott.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott. Go ahead.
The only concern I have with this bill is that if a church has a van that is fifteen or twenty years old and they have to wait another ten years to get a passenger van to accommodate their need, uh, that's the only downfall I see to this. Uh, I just feel like that, uh, it, it could be longer than ten years, uh, because we've got a hundred churches, I believe. So, you know, if we do ten a year, I mean, that's, uh, you might have a church that's got a forty-year-old van and, you know, they gotta wait till everybody else is either declined or approved. So, that's my concern about it.
Thank you, Representative Scott. Um. Any other discussion?
Speaker, Thomas Senior?
Yes, sir, Representative Holla Osborne. Go ahead.
Um, what we're going to be doing, Representative Scott, in the very near future, it's not really what you're talking about, but I know, uh, Representative Randolph reached out to the LNC committee and we're actually going to be getting together soon and be getting, talking about the, um, the churches that have received, uh, vans, lawn mowers, um, and grass in general. So, hopefully that's going to, we'll be able to butt that on some of those things, um, and just give us a clearer picture on who has received what in the past. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Speaker, James Jennings.
Go ahead, Mr. Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I stated at the LNC meeting, you know, once those vans are given to the church, they belong to the church. They can do what they want with them. They can sell them the next week. Uh, I'm not against the churches having them, but you have to be careful where you buy them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
No.
Lucian Tiger?
No.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
No.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Speaker, twelve in favor, three against.
Twelve in favor, three against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty zero one six. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title Twenty Seven, Appendix One, Rule Fourteen entitled Fees for Filing and Appeal and amending MCN CA Title Twenty Seven, Appendix Two, Rule Two. Sponsor Travis Scott.
Travis Scott, Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Scott made a motion to adopt NCA twenty zero one six. Do I have a second?
Second, James Jennings.
Seconded by Representative James Jennings. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Speaker Travis Scott.
Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Speaker. I just want to highlight that we're not increasing anything. We're just clarifying some language in this code, uh, to alleviate any questions that are arise by attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford? Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings? James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Speaker, fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty zero one eight. A law of Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN CA Title Twenty Two, Chapter Ten, Subchapter Ten entitled General Matters. Sponsor Mark Randolph.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Randolph made a motion to adopt NCA twenty zero one eight. Do I have a second?
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne second.
Seconded by Representative Holla Osborne. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Holla Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Speaker, fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. That concludes the order of business. Uh, is there any other business? Any other business? Hearing none, announcements. Is there any announcements? Uh, I have one announcement. National Council Representatives, uh, immediate following this, Christie Jackson is going to send out another email with a call-in number and an ID. Uh, Chief Field has some information that he wants to share with the National Council. So, immediately after this, wait on an email and you'll get another call-in number. Let me clarify that. Christie, uh, Christie said she already had the emails, so. Any other announcements? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Lucian Tiger make a motion to adjourn.
Representative Tiger made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Representative Jennings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll do the benediction, um, Mr. William Low.
Thank you, Speaker. I pray for our nation for today, thank you for everything you've given. Please watch over our great nation, watch over our, all the elders and those susceptible to catching their illness, watch over our families and everything that we do, Lord. Thank you for bringing us all together and conducting great business for our nation. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right.
Meeting adjourned.